I started and called a meeting in order. Welcome to the Falls Township Board of Supervisors Meeting Monday, or Tuesday, February 18th. Let's start with a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Fulon.
Mr. Galloway?
Here.
Mr. Braskin?
Here.
Mr. Miss?
Here.
Mr. Rocco?
Here.
Mr. Rocco had a last-minute business engagement, so he can't be with us. Before we start our meeting tonight, we have a quick presentation. We have five new police officers that we're hiring, Falls Township PD. I know we've been looking for, the search has been going on for a couple of years now, actually. We missed a couple of opportunities, but we've got five great candidates now. And we're going to go through them one by one, and then we'll pass a resolution for each one, and some of them are actually here to get sworn in tonight. I'm going to go, not in order that who's here, but in order of how they were hired. So the first one is Daniel Metalski, Matkowski, I'm sorry. Daniel was born in Philadelphia County, graduated Central High School in Brooksville, Florida, in 2009. Joined the Marine Corps in 2010, graduated from Temple University with a business degree in 2019. He's currently a cadet at the Temple University Police Academy and is graduating in March 2020. Daniel will have Falls Township Police Department Badge number 123. The second candidate is Michael Collins. Michael was born and raised in Montgomery County and graduated from Abington High School in 2012. He graduated from Penn State Abington with a degree in administration of justice. He currently holds the rank of First Lieutenant in the US Army and is the Executive Officer of the US Army Recruiting Station in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. He will be attending Temple University Police Academy in the spring. Michael will have Falls Township Police Department Badge number 124. The third candidate, Matthew Shannon. Matthew grew up in Montgomery County and graduated from Upper Moreland Area High School. He attended Westchester University, graduated from Montgomery County Community College Police Academy in 2015. He's worked as a police officer at the East Norton Township Police Department since 2016. And Matthew will have Falls Township Badge number 125. The fourth candidate, Robert Goodwin. Robert grew up in Bucks County, graduated Ben Salem High School in 2014. He graduated from Penn State Abington with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Robert graduated the Philadelphia Police Academy in 2019 and has been employed as a Philadelphia police officer since 2019, September. Math, or Robert, I'm sorry, will have Falls Township Police Department Badge number 126. Last one is Mike, Michael Meraw. Michael grew up in Hamilton, New Jersey. He graduated from James Madison University with a bachelor's degree and is currently enrolled in a master's program. Michael served in the United States National Guard, Army National Guard, and attained the rank of First Lieutenant. Michael's been employed for the last four and a half years as a police officer in Hollywood, Florida. They've all passed all phases of the hiring and are all recommended for hiring. Michael will have badge number 127. And just for reference, Chief Wilcox, what badge number do you have?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. Now we're up to 127. So in order of the ones that were hired, we have to pass a resolution. So the first one for Daniel Metkowsky is going to be Resolution Number 20-7. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
The second motion is for Michael Collins, which will be Resolution Number 20-8. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion for Michael Collins.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
The third resolution is Matthew Shannon, Resolution 20-9.
I'll make the motion for Matthew Shannon.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fourth is Robert Goodwin, Resolution 20-10. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly is Michael Meraw, Resolution 20-11.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And with that, Judge Wyslawski's here. We're going to swear in, and first one will be Daniel Metkowski.
Raise your right hand, place the left hand on the Bible, and repeat after me. Aye, Officer Daniel Metkowski.
Aye, Officer Daniel Metkowski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The laws of this Commonwealth.
The laws of this Commonwealth.
And this governmental subdivision.
And this governmental subdivision.
And that I will uphold.
And that I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
Enforce.
Enforce.
The law and discharge the duties of my office.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Enforce the law.
Enforce the law.
I made a joint bad one. Enforce the law.
Enforce the law.
And discharge the duties.
And discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
For the Falls Township Police Department.
For the Falls Township Police Department.
Bucks County, Pennsylvania.
Bucks County, Pennsylvania. Congratulations. All right, next we have Matthew Shannon, who's going to get sworn in.
Raise your right hand. Okay, repeat after me. Aye, Officer Matthew Shannon.
Aye, Officer Matthew Shannon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The laws of this Commonwealth.
The laws of this Commonwealth.
And this governmental subdivision.
And this governmental subdivision.
And that I will uphold.
And that I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
Enforce the law.
Enforce the law.
And discharge the duties.
And discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
For Falls Township Police Department.
For Falls Township Police Department.
Bucks County, Pennsylvania.
Bucks County, Pennsylvania. All right, and lastly, we have Robert Goodwin.
Aye, Officer Robert Goodwin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And this governmental subdivision.
And this governmental subdivision.
And that I will uphold.
And that I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
Enforce the law.
Enforce the law.
And discharge the duties.
And discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
For Falls Township Police Department.
For Falls Township Police Department.
Bucks County, Pennsylvania.
Bucks County, Pennsylvania. All right, and lastly, we have Robert Goodwin.
Aye, Officer Robert Goodwin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The laws of this Commonwealth.
The laws of this Commonwealth.
And this governmental subdivision.
And this governmental subdivision.
And that I will uphold.
And that I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
Enforce the law.
Enforce the law.
And discharge the duties.
And discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
For Falls Township Police Department.
For Falls Township Police Department.
Bucks County, Pennsylvania.
Bucks County, Pennsylvania. Do we have anything else to add, Lieutenant Whitney, or Chief Wilcox, or Lieutenant Ward?
Sir.
I'd like to thank the board for their due diligence and their patience. I'm almost sorry. I'd like to thank the board for their due diligence and their patience. But with enough fact, this is the most officers we've had sworn in since 1979.
Wow.
And thank you very much. I'd like to thank Lieutenant Whitney and his hiring, and the men who all helped hire these gentlemen. I think they did a great job, and I want to thank them all.
Thank you. [applause]
Officer, if you could, I'm on for a better. And then we can get signed, you're like, damn. Come on, let's cheer him to the door. Be home.
I think they caught it.
Anybody want to take a photo? I feel pretty good. Congratulations. Appreciate it a little bit. Thanks. Everybody who's in front better. I'll tell you, I'm ready. Ready, guys? One, two, three. Yeah, everybody's ready. Yeah. Ready, guys? One, two, three. Yeah. I'm really great. Don't be that.
Real quickly, before everyone files out, Chief Wilcox is going to give us his police report. A little bit out of order tonight, so.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. It's always a, I'd like to thank you once again for allowing us to hire these new members of the police department. I'll start off with some community policing things. Coffee with a cop is scheduled for March. Cecilia hasn't given me a definitive date yet, but as soon as I have it, I'll give it to the board, and anybody is always, would like to attend, you're always welcome. The chief of the day program continues. We finished at Folsington School, and we're presently at Penn Valley. Now, gentlemen, I just wanted to give you some statistical information. We received in the, just recently, the vehicle code in, the word income sounds bad, but it's really not income. It's the revenues derived from a result of traffic enforcement. It came to $127,873.43. But this is really not a true depiction, because out of this money comes all the overtime for the traffic details and for attending the judge's court. So it's really not a true picture, and I don't want the, the public to think that we do this for revenue. We don't do it for revenue, we do it for traffic enforcement. Our total calls for, our total calls for service last year were 19,725. This is a little bit lower than the year before. Our busiest quarter was April, May, and June, that was 5,081 calls. Our busiest month was July with 1,804 calls. We handled 2,422 medical emergencies. Now, our accidents for the year were 1,081. Out of that, 311 were non-reportable, 771 were reportable. We handled 51 DUI arrests, that was five down from last year, a little, we had struck pedestrians with 14, that was a little bit higher than the year before, and our fadals were down by one. We had four fadals last year and three. I just took this information to, just to give you a highlight, to show you, we derived all this information from our CODI website here. I'll be more than happy to give any member of the board a copy of CODI, so you could see, you can, it breaks it all down. Gentlemen, that's all I have for you this evening.
Do you know, traffic-wise, since they've done the improvements to Route 1 at the split, are the numbers down in accidents and?
In that area, yes.
They are? I guess you don't have those numbers, obviously.
Our accident numbers are down from last year.
Right.
And I attribute that to intensive traffic enforcement, especially up on Route 13, where we traditionally had a lot of very, very nasty accidents up there.
All right, thank you.
Chief, with the hiring of the five additional officers, do you foresee rate staff in which your department will receive less overtime this year?
Mr. Palmer, that's, it's a very good question, because it depends, we have two officers, one out on IOD and one out with sickness, and it depends whether they come back or not. Right now, they're still carried as officers on the, on the roll, but, and then we have two other officers, one with a separated shoulder, and we have another one who had a shoulder operation. They're still out, so technically, we're four down at the moment. And we're always filling, backfilling here. And in the true sense of the word, six months from now, I hope I can say to you, Mr. Palmer, that, that we're, we're not backfilling anymore, and we've attained the goal that we want to attain. When I said to you tonight about 1979, that's really true. But if those two officers that I said, one who's at IOD, if that officer doesn't come back, and the other one who's sick doesn't come back, then we're, we're at street level again. So we're always digging out of the hole here. But thank you, thank you to the, the board.
Thank you.
Thank you for your due diligence, and this certainly helps us. And it looks like we have a fine crop of candidates here. Thank you, men.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
And thanks again, Judge Wyslawski.
My pleasure.
All right.
Thank you, Judge.
Item one on our agenda is public comment. Two names on the list, first one, Tony Batiste.
Good evening. I don't know if this is on.
Yeah.
Okay. First off, I had contacted Mr. Galloway's office, because I could not get a response out of DEP about whether or not we can actually have a local law regarding the air quality, if it can be stricter than what is normal for the state. And I know our solicitor has said, no, we can't. However, I wasn't so sure about that, so I did contact Mr. Galloway's office. He also tried to get hold of DEP and get a response out of them, and could not. However, he did set his staff to task, and they sent me a response, and I'm going to provide it to you, that it appears, according to them, that yes, we can.
It's a lot of legalese, it's a lot of double negatives in there, so you kind of have to fish your way around, but it does appear that we can, and if that is the case, I think that is something we should look into doing. Second off, I would like to know, there was an application by Waste Management to install a whole bunch of smokestacks to burn off the methane gas, because supposedly Exelon was going to close their electric plant. Now I understand that they're going to keep it open, or somebody else is buying it. And if that is the case, where does that leave the applications for Waste Management for all those smokestacks? And it's about like nine or 10 or 11 of them, I think.
Mr. Clark, can you answer that?
I think that I pushed a button. Waste Management is still moving forward with the Flair Project.
Flair Project.
Yep.
So then we're going to have both the burning from the Exelon plant and from the smokestacks, so we're doubling the air pollution. Okay, definitely need that air quality, fellas. And the last thing is, is there any news on Alcon? Whether the lawsuit or anything else regarding?
Yes, they submitted their brief last week.
Our brief will be filed tomorrow, and then they'll have 10 days to respond.
Once theirs is filed, we'll put it on the website, the highlights of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Donna Aherns?
Mr. Clark, are you able to get back to us with review of this?
We've already produced a memo on this, Mr. Palmer, before you came on to the board. We then updated that memo for all of the board members with some additional information. We'll make sure we get both of those to you, but it's quite clear that we're not allowed to, we're not legally able to pass. I'm sure that, I'm sure this is the, the section of the act that we've already reviewed, and that has already been determined that we are not capable of passing this type of clean air ordinance that is being proposed.
All right. So if you review this, you'll get back?
We certainly will.
Thank you.
Hi, Donna Aherns, Falls Township. I've lived in Falls Township for 57 years, grew up on New Pond Lane, and now I live in Birch Valley. And every day, I'm out on the road, and I've noticed that the garbage on the side of the roads is completely out of control, all, every major roadway in our township, whether it's Route 13, Route 1, the off-ramps, Falls Tully Town, Penn Valley, the trash is, it's horrible. And I, I feel like it's so part of our culture at this point that we're becoming desensitized to it. So the, last week, I called Mr. Galloway's office, State Representative, and asked about, because I was told it was a state through Route 13 in particular. And I was basically told that it's really just that people don't work together, and it's hard to pass, get like trash laws and whatever, and a bunch of reasons. I mean, the girls were nice, they tried, but they didn't have an answer. So then I was told to call Pendoc, which I did, and then I was told that basically I have to adopt the highway and clean it myself. And I'm, I'm pretty energetic, but I'm not that energetic, okay? So I'm not going to do that. But I do have a suggestion, I'm not just going to stand here and complain. So here's what I'm proposing. Since we're always talking about job creation, why can't we just, and I'm not talking about extending the road crew or any of that, just hire like four guys or six guys to just do nothing but pick up trash, and pay them a decent 18, $20 an hour, whatever it is, and let them pick up the trash. And I don't really, and I don't mean to be mean, but I don't really care if it's a state highway, a county road, a township road, my grandmother's road, I don't care. I'm, it's in my township, and I have to look at it every day, and it's disgusting, it's completely out of control. I don't ever, like I said, I'm, I am 57 years old, and I don't ever remember it being this bad.
Well, about, an hour before we came in here, we had an executive session, and we talked about this very issue, which Mr. Palmer and Mr. Rocco brought up. There's a company that we make a donation to every year, TAG, Townships Against Graffiti, and they gave us a quote for a flat rate, correct? They will go out and clean up an area that we specify. Once we pay them to clean it up, with the donation we make every year for the graffiti cleanup, which isn't very large, and they do a great job, it'll be a maintenance thing for them, and they'll continue to clean it up.
That would be great, because we have to do something.
So that is part of our plan, that in conjunction with using people that have to do community service from Judge Wyslawski's office with the road crew and the police department, we actually have a plan that we are putting together, hopefully in the spring.
And I actually thought about even, like, it's, okay, like I said, I'm on the road all the time, and a lot of it, it does come from the garbage trucks that are coming to the landfill, but really, it's not, it's, some of it, yes, is blowing off the trucks, but a good portion of it is the truck driver. It's the Wawa bag and the McDonald's bag, and it's that kind of stuff, and so.
We do have to get permission from, we have to coordinate with Pendoc, correct? Do you go on their property?
I remember that from a couple of years ago.
Yeah, that's not going to be that big a deal.
That's not going to stop us.
Yeah.
We are, we're doing Falls Township.
Because even maybe, maybe some of these, these companies, maybe, you know, just Wawa, Dunkin' Donuts, 7-Eleven, whatever it might be, maybe they need to be taxed and maybe add two cents to a cup of coffee and chip in for this cleanup, since it's the crap that's coming from there.
Fee is really, it's pretty reasonable, it's not that much of a charge, to be honest with you. They send a three-man crew out, if we designate, say, the cloverleafs coming off of 13.
Mm-hmm, oh, they're terrible.
They'll clean it up the one time for that fee, and then once it's cleaned up, it'll be a maintenance thing for them, they'll continue to keep it clean.
Yeah, and I'm at the end of Black Pine, and I do, I pick up my green space, so I do put my money where my mouth is.
Yeah, where I'm at on West Trenton, off of West Trenton, by the post office and all, is our open space across the street there, and that's a mess in there as well.
It's terrible, I know.
We actually clean up ourselves at the end of my street, on Independence Drive, down at the end there, along the fence line, the neighborhood, some people in the neighborhood they gather.
Last year, the people on Reed Avenue cleaned up on along Old 13, and it was beautiful for a while. But anyway, thank you, I'm glad you're looking into it.
Yep.
Thanks very much. Congratulations.
All right, that's all the names on the list. Anyone else for public comment? No hands. Item number two, Home Food Services of Pennsylvania, Agastino Foods, conditional use for their new operation on Headley Place.
Mr. Park.
What'd you call me?
The dads will need a, a motion to open the conditional use hearing.
All right, do we have a motion to open the conditional use hearing?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Dads, members of the board, this is a conditional use hearing. The applicant is Home Food Services of PA Inc. The property that is the subject of this application is 12 Headley Place, Folsington, PA, tax parcel number 13-032-089-002, Township of Falls, Bucks County, Pennsylvania. This is an application requesting conditional use to operate a warehousing, storage, distribution facility for fresh and frozen meats at the referenced address, which is located in the PIP zoning district. The applicant this evening is represented by John Torrente Esquire, and Mr. Torrente, as you and I briefly discussed before the start of the meeting, it has been the policy of this board with respect to conditional use hearings, that you can briefly summarize at the end there, along the fence line, the neighborhood, some people in the neighborhood together.
Last year, the people on Reed Avenue cleaned up on a long old 13 and it was beautiful for a while. But anyway, thank you, I'm glad you're looking into it. Thanks very much. Congratulations.
All right, that's all the names on the list. Anyone else for public comment? No hands. Item number two, Home Food Services of Pennsylvania. Agastino Foods, a conditional use for their new operation on Headley Place. What'd you call me? Do we have a motion to open the conditional use hearing?
Second in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The applicant is Home Food Services of PA Inc. The property that is the subject of this application is 12 Headley Place, Fallsington, PA. Tax parcel number 13-032-089-002. Township of Falls, Bucks County, Pennsylvania. This is an application requesting conditional use to operate a warehousing, storage, distribution facility for fresh and frozen meats at the referenced address, which is located in the PIP zoning district. The applicant this evening is represented by John Torrente Esquire. And Mr. Torrente, as you and I briefly discussed before the start of the meeting, it has been the policy of this board with respect to conditional use hearings that you can briefly summarize the testimony of your witnesses. You can then ask your witnesses to come forward and to be sworn and ask them if the summary you have given is accurate. And then you and your witnesses will be made available for, to answer any questions from any board members, any members of the staff, and any members of the public requesting party status. Do you understand this procedure, Mr. Torrente?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Clark, I do understand the...
You may proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, as Mr. Clark had mentioned, my name is John Torrente. I am the attorney for the applicant, Home Food Services of PA Inc., trading as Agastino Foods. I do have exhibits to present to Mr. Clark and the staff and, and the board as well. If I may approach. I pre-marked for identification. Three exhibits. A1, A2, and A3. A1 is the certification of service. I only have two copies of the certification of service.
That's fine.
What's up, Mr. Torrente from Minnesota? Are we supposed to be projecting something right now?
Well, we're having trouble with the video portion of it. Some of what he is pinging out, I believe, is part of the things that I can't put up on the screen. It's easier for everyone. The video to show the actual cook, the system that we want to explain to the board.
Technical difficulties, the new exhibit, well, right now, we're going to the old-fashioned way with paper from his...
The second exhibit is, is it's a material plan, A2. Just indicates a slight change in the, the plan. Material plan for my client. Some of the tanks, and you'll see it's two pages, some of the tanks have been moved indoors and were originally scheduled to be constructed. And this was discussed with the planning commission, um, December 18th... Of last year, I'm sorry, December 16th of 2019, where the planning commission recommended to this board, it was an unanimous recommendation of approval. The third exhibit is exhibit A3. Which are some, it's a group of aerial photos, Google Earth of the subject property with some indications of where the parking will be located, the handicap parking. By way of background, my client is a, a fourth generation meat processor. They do have a facility currently in, in Bristol Borough. Again, I'm before you tonight on a conditional use application. The property is in the PIP planned industrial park district. It's in an existing building, which, with an existing parking lot. I believe the previous occupant of that property was a, a wareha, warehousing facility. I'm not exactly sure of the, the occupant of the property. As Mr. Clark had indicated, conditional use application is to permit food distribution, storage of prepared, prepared foods and associated offices, including the installation and operation of an Armore Inox water bath cooking system for food cooking products in vacuum sealed packages called sous vide, okay, which means under vacuum. Okay, it's a unique process and my client, John Passananti, who's here, can answer a lot of the specifics about this. He's trying to get this up on the screen just to show everyone here what this process entails. Maybe Mr. Jones was at the planning commission, he saw a little bit of it, so...
Unfortunately, we're having the same video issues that we had the last time. And apparently it's a, it's the site that the video's coming from, so it's not completely here. But the process, I can bring up a schematic of, of the actual system itself. And, you know, the, the system is basically, as, as John said, it's a water bath cooking system. So all the product that is, is cooked in the system is at our facility in Bristol, is seasoned, it's seared, in a, in a flame grill, it's vacuum packaged, at all at that facility. And then all we would be doing is transporting that product to the Falls facility and putting it through the sous vide process, which is actually taking those vacuum package, packages and putting them into a controlled water environment for a period of time. The product...
Thank you. So the product is then chilled with the system itself and then you take the product and basically blast freeze it. So it's pretty, it's pretty self-contained. There were several questions that had come up at the...
I asked a question, are we, are we just sitting, waiting on a video to see the process or?
We're trying to get it up, but I, I don't know if it's, it's going to happen.
That's all right, I think we've seen the process.
Yeah, like, I'm okay, I'm moving on from that and just continue.
Okay, all right, well...
I'll just give a little more background and also proof is, is instructed.
Is anybody familiar with the process? You know what they're talking about, right?
I know it's super easy.
Yeah, okay.
So it's important to note that no grinding or packaging of raw meat products will be conducted on sites. John had indicated it's going to be, that, that process is going to be done in Bristol. Everything's going to be delivered here and cooked on site because where that goes. And then, you know, you know, taken off premises. There'll be some storage on site of that as well. They anticipate about two to five inbound, outbound deliveries during normal business hours, truck deliveries on the site. There will not be any combustible or flammable materials on the site. The hours of operation will be 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. There'll be 10 employees at the site, five office staff and five production staff. The meats will be delivered, as I mentioned, to the site, already packaged, and the applicant will be storing dry goods on pallets at the, at the premises as well. There will be freezer space installed for dry storage. There's no plans at this time to expand the, the existing facility, no additions planned in any way. Again, as I mentioned, there was a recommendation from the planning commission on 12/16 of 2019. And with that said, I'd like, I'd just like to go through exhibit A2 with, oh, I'm sorry, A3, which is the aerial photos. And this is the testimony that I think that John's going to use. I'm passing it.
And John, we're going to need you more by the microphone.
Okay.
Sure. Thank you. Just give a copy of A3 to John. I think it is. Okay, so I handed up A3 to you.
Okay.
It's on the projector. So let's just, let's take the board through this application, I'm sorry, through this exhibit A3. Okay, so A3 is, is what?
Yeah, we're going to swear your, your witness.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I do. John Passanante, P-A-S-S-A-N-A-N-T-E.
Okay, John, let's just take the board through the, through the exhibit A3, the first page, okay? This is a, I guess, a Google Earth image?
Yeah, this is, so this was a, a Google Earth image of an aerial shot of the property as it is today. When we had submitted the original plot plan, the, the actual plot plan didn't match what was actually there. So what we did was, did an aerial shot of it so that we could outline parking, egress, lighting, and such things. So the second page is the existing parking, which is shaded in blue. Currently, the prior tenants had that, that parking striped. They do have eight, two ADA parking places, parking spots with a ramped area up into the building with 13 additional standard parking spots that measured roughly eight and a half by 19 feet each. So that, that's what's there currently. When we, so, so that's what's there currently. We would like to, like, as, as John mentioned, the application is for office space as well as the process that we're, we would like to do there, the fully cooked operation. The office space, though, is much needed. The build-out will probably, would take, assuming that we're able to get approval, would take probably six months to a year, so we would like to utilize the offices as soon as possible while we finish planning. So the existing parking place spots would be utilized at that time. Prior to starting any of the renovations, on the third page, there is a new shaded blue spot, which measures out to 185 feet by 19 feet. We can, we will stripe two ADA accessible parking spots with 96-inch van accessible aisle with 18 standard parking spots, eight foot by 19 feet. The yellow is for additional parking space, spaces if needed. The application initially said that we were going to have 10 employees there and hoping to scale that to roughly 20. That, the, the equipment that we're installing to begin with, the, the first line of equipment is actually fairly automated, so it doesn't need a tremendous amount of personnel to it. But as, if we were to add a second system or a third, you know, then we would need additional employees. At that time, we have plenty of space there to, to add, you know, additional parking. Again, that's measuring 110 feet by 19 feet. So more, plenty of additional space for parking.
John, did, did you hear, I'm sorry to cut you off, but did you, you heard my resuscitation of, of your operation earlier and do you agree with everything I said?
I do.
Okay, and if you were to be testifying as to those, those facts, would they be, are they true and correct and accurate?
They are.
Okay, and you adopt that as your own testimony?
I do.
Okay, so, I was sorry to cut you off, but you were on page three, I think you just wrapped that up.
So, you know, as far as parking with the building, that was one area of confusion with our application, I think. So, you know, we took the time to kind of map all that outs for, for the township and the board. And then also, there were some questions that had come up about lighting. There is existing lighting that, you know, so there's six fixtures total. Three are mounted on the building itself, two lamp posts, one has two fixtures and one has a single fixture on it. They're metal halide lights, you know, typical for floodlights in, in a parking lot setting and should be plenty of illumination. The last page is the, is really, you know, again, it's, it's relatively a fluid situation as far as the layout is concerned, you know, as we're, as we're kind of checking off boxes. So some, some changes that have had, that have occurred since we initially had submitted the application, as John had mentioned earlier. You'll notice that the tanks are now in the building versus outside of the building. What we do have to put outside of the building is the glycol chilling system to keep, to basically bring the food down in temperature. That would need to be outside on just a concrete pad, which we would have screening around. The other things that have changed was that there's an existing dock door to the east side of the building. That door will actually be abandoned and then three new, three to four new dock doors would be installed. Currently, this, this picture shows some racking there. That racking is just a placeholder. That racking is not going in place. So again, that, what, the reason I bring that to the board's attention is because by, by losing that additional, that existing dock door, that frees up that additional space on the left, the east side for, which is shaded in yellow for additional parking places if needed.
By way of background, you are a fourth generation meat processor, USDA-approved facility.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Describe that for the board.
Yeah, so we're, so we're, we're in the food business. We've been in the food business for four generations. Butchers by trade. The industry's become quite competitive. What we primarily have done is direct-to-consumer business, so selling door-to-door. Our business is now 100% business-to-business, so we actually do a lot of private label work for other direct-to-consumer marketing companies. Meal kits are popular today. You might be familiar with a HelloFresh or a, a Blue Apron or something along those lines. We would be the type of company contracted to cut the proteins for those companies. So the...
The HelloFresh stuff?
What's that?
Your HelloFresh?
I was with them with their first box.
Wow.
Yeah. They've been pretty good to our growth, actually, which led to us needing additional space all around, which is kind of how this all started. We, we needed additional storage space because we were using preferred cold storage down in Philadelphia as a, as a working freezer and cooler and that just was, it wasn't efficient and costing us way, way too much time and money. So storage is kind of where this all was rooted. But kind of circling back, the, the goal is to, you know, to, to stay as, at a competitive edge for a small company like us. You know, just cutting meat, you know, is, is kind of like if you remember Rocky with the hanging meat, you know, they don't do that anymore. Now everything comes in boxes because the processors kind of wised up to that. So now portioning cutting meat, the, the processors are wising up on that. So now they're adding some additional portioning, which is basically what we do. So trying to stay ahead of that curve is very important to the sustainability of our company. And, you know, the, the, the value-add piece, which we've always done raw value-added proteins, which would be like marinated pork tenderloins you see in the, in the supermarket, marinated chicken breasts, all raw that you would take home and, and cook yourself. For food safety reasons, that's kind of, you know, was the, about the extent we could do in Bristol. But being able to now bring fully cooked product to the marketplace is, you know, our, our, our attempt to stay one head, a step ahead. The, the USDA inspected facility in Bristol, this facility in Falls would also have to be USDA inspected. In addition to being USDA inspected, we're also, we voluntarily are subject to, which we pay for, third-party audits. So we are actually SQF certified, which is a GFSI certification, Global Food Safety Initiative. It's respected throughout the globe. We actually scored a 94 on our last, our last evaluation, which was in September. So, you know, we, we pride ourselves on a very clean operation. Being USDA compliant is definitely an accomplishment, but making those guys happy is, is, is quite a challenge. You have to have programs in place, not just for food safety, but just for sustainability for your customers. So some pretty intense programs. So this facility would also now be a second facility that would need to be SQF certified as well. So, you know, just from, you know, how that relates to the township is, again, it's a very clean operation. All the product going into this place is, is going to be sealed, taken out sealed, frozen sealed. There's, should be no stench as far as rubbish or anything along those lines. The other thing that's nice about it is the, you get steam coming off of these instead of, you know, you know, if you have a live grill going, you will actually get the smell of cooking meat in the, in the air. There, there's no smell to this at all because it's simply just water steam that's, that's ventilated outside of the building.
John, so 12, 12, I'm sorry to cut you off. 12 Headley Place, that's, it's a cul-de-sac street, correct?
Correct.
And it's just, it's industrial, there's three industrial properties there presently. To your knowledge, there's no residential neighborhoods?
There's no residents in the area. There's another industrial building or complex that butts up to the east side of it, which is covered by woods anyway, where that yellow shaded area is on exhibit A3.
Okay, so I think we gave, I think we gave the board a, a good description of, or John did at least, anyway, of, of what the process entails, the parking and the surrounding community. And if there's any questions from the board at this time that you'd like us to answer or...
Yeah, as far as your EDUs that you plan on using for your, your tanks, did you meet with the local water authority in regards to meeting EDU requirements for that particular parcel? And I don't know if you're sending what down the drains, the grease trap ordinance, do you meet and fulfill all those requirements?
So EDUs, we have been in contact with the water authority. So we are, we, we actually have applied for additional EDUs. However, the system is a closed system, so starting with the water, then I can elaborate on the sewage. So it's a closed system, so the water's actually recycled. So the EDUs actually aren't as high of a demand as you would think. So if you read through that, I think it's something like 3,800 gallons of water total. But that's why we have those holding tanks and then there's a, there's a filtration system the water goes through. So, you know, the recommendation from the manufacturer is to change the water every six months or for maintenance issues. That is ultimately up to us to decide with our USDA and from a food safety standpoint. We would have to prove that the water is, is clean and safe for our continued process, which would go under microbial testing and that's how we would verify that the water is still clean. When the water is dirty, again, there's no real grease or any oils. It could just simply be bacterias or, or molds or things that are growing. If you, if the tanks were idled for a while or, or something along those lines, or just an overall general maintenance, right? I mean, you just want to clean your tanks, get in there, make sure you don't have any corrosion, anything going on, is, is, that's the manufacturer's recommendation. One thing that the, that, on our last meeting, that was brought up was the temperature of the water that was coming, that was being discharged into the sewers. So we have spoken to them, the water, the hot, very hot, which, you know, is a little misleading on the, on the, on the, on the diagram there, is 185 degrees. So we're not talking about boiling water. But there's also a mixing valve that goes on, so when you discharge water, it mixes with the cold to bring that water down in temperature so that it doesn't go into the sewer, the sewer system scorching hot. And then as far as, you know, cleaning, there, it's a pretty simple cleaning, it's, you know, your general soap and water for, for, you know, there's no harsh chemicals or anything like that used during the cleaning process.
No, I'm, I'm good. I appreciate all the, you know, description and very informative. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Just good luck with your business.
Thank you, Brian.
And your family's been in the food delivery, I mean, you guys have been in Bristol delivering food to homes forever, right?
Yeah, yep. So, so I said we're 100% B2B, so they're still Passananti's Home Food Services.
It is, okay.
But we sold that, the, the, the marketing piece of that going back about five years ago. So if you drive down Farragut Avenue, Old Charlie Karp's house says Passananti's Home Food Service on it. That's actually not our company, but we do supply all the food for that company. So that was part of our, our deal. We wanted... We wanted to really focus, our, our growth was, you know, you kind of had to pick one or the other, right? Pick what you're good at. We didn't, you know, the sales piece, the meat was, yeah, process side was my thing. So, you know, being out, knocking on doors wasn't quite what I wanted to pursue.
I'd like to see such an old company, you know, still there and come to Falls Township too.
Looking forward to it.
And home delivery's getting popular, like you said, with the prepared meals.
Definitely, and staying, again, on top of that, that curve. So, you know, the Meal Kit service was actually born in Europe, so, and being such a smaller market, you know, it's a really nice, it's a nice that it's kind of gone through the cycle in Europe. So, you know, if you visit any of the food stores in Europe, you notice that there's a lot of Meal Kit-type concepts in bricks-and-mortar retail. So, it kind of goes like home delivery, then everybody falls in love with the convenience, but yet they want some more flexibility where they want to go to, so they want the meals where they can pick which vegetables they want, or which seasonings they want, or which protein they want, versus somebody else making that decision for them week by week. So, again, having a fully-cooked protein ready to go is a piece of staying ahead of that, and we are in talks with some retailers to be able to, you know, produce proteins for them, trying to be ready for the next wave.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The only thing I would like to add is, or I'm sorry, I forgot to do, is move for the admission of Exhibits A1 through A3 into the record.
Mr. Rudolph, I mean Clark, I'm sorry.
No, you should, if anyone is requesting party status, if not, you can close the hearing, take public comment, and then vote.
And no one hands for a party status, so is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, any public comment needed? Use the mic, please.
So, you said that when you process this meat and then you clean these tanks, you're using soap and water to clean these tanks? No harsh chemicals are going back into the environment? Okay.
That's correct.
Anyone else? No? All right, um, what? So, we have the next motion to approve the...
That'd be correct, or deny.
Yeah.
That's your inclination, but yes, a motion.
All right, is there a motion?
I so moved.
Make a motion to...
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
Thank you, guys. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you.
That concludes our business tonight, may we be excused.
You may.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I've seen it on the screen that one.
Oh, you had one.
I bet it's not as big as yours.
All right, next on the agenda is a proposal from FX Brown for Act 101 Recycling Grant. Mr. Tekeeta.
The board is being asked to consider a proposal to renew the contract with FX Brown for the Act 101 Recycling Grant. The cost for the scope of work they're proposing is $4,800.
All right, and what is the reason for this? We do this every year, right?
Yes, what they do is, they actually will obtain documentation on tonnages, and then they prepare all the paperwork for the recycling report for Bucks County, and then they also file the grant application for us.
Do we know how much money we got last year?
Last year, we received $68,503.
So, it's a pretty good investment.
Yeah, and their fee at that point was the same, $4,800.
Right. We've been doing this a long time. Any questions for board members?
No.
Any public comment needed? All right, is there a motion to approve the proposal from FX Brown for $4,800?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
All right. Item number four, consider authorization for advertisement for tree trimming and removal of tree services in Falls Township. Mr. Tekeeta again.
Yes, the board is being asked to consider authorization to advertise for bidding for the tree trimming and removal services. We've done this program in the past, starting with the ash trees, and we'd like to continue for general maintenance and for emergencies.
All right. Any questions from board members?
None.
We're just advertising tonight, right?
That's correct.
Is the, I do apologize, I didn't have a chance to look over this, but is it the same as what we put out last year?
I believe it is.
Same advertisement?
Yes.
Well, last year was very confusing, right? Wasn't there problems?
No, no, but then we rewrote it and we started over, that's why.
So, this is the cleaned-up version?
This is the rewritten one.
I mean, Mr. Lawson's not here, but I was just kind of curious how, like, what his thoughts were on, you know, on the tree contractor that won the bid. You know, because then we're stuck, we were kind of stuck with a tree service, whether they're reliable or unreliable, or whether they go out of business, or whatever happens.
This contract is for one year. I know the previous contracts were for longer periods, and there was problems with the other tree service that we had.
There was, or wasn't?
There was. So, that's why we reduced this to one-year contract.
But they only got a one-year, right?
The, for last year?
Yeah.
I'd have to double check.
That was a one-year thing, because we did this the same time, I think, last year.
I think it was a one-year contract, and we did require them to submit a performance bond in the event that there was issues. My understanding is that there were a couple of speed bumps, but we never had to enforce the performance security.
There was what?
There, I think there was a couple of speed bumps, but we were to work with the contractor to get everything resolved before having to go out to performance security. But that was one of the reasons that we included the performance security requirement.
Any other questions, Mr. Palmer?
Is this in lieu of all of our tree removal, or do we still use Public Works for odds and ends?
Public Works would still do odds and ends, this group would go out if there's any emergencies that, or projects too large for Public Works to handle.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any public comment needed? No, no hands, all right. Is there a motion to authorize for, authorize the advertisement for the tree trimming and removal tree services for 2020?
So moved.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. I'm a no.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Item number five, consider quotes for fertilizer for township facilities.
The board is being asked to consider quotes for the 2020 fertilization contract. We have three quotes, one from True Green for $18,707.85, Capital Turf Management for $22,585, total lawn care and landscaping, $24,528. True Green has, we, the township has used True Green over the past few years, and we'd like to continue to use this company's services for 2020.
Right, we've had them for quite a few years now.
Yeah, I think they did a good job, True Green.
Yep. Any other, any questions for any board members?
None.
Mr. Palmer? Any public comment needed? No? Or is there a motion to approve the contract with True Green in the amount of $18,707? Is that right, Mr. Tekeeta? $85.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
All right, Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
All right, item number six, consider quote for purchase and installation for a new playground at Kirby Park, and tonight we have Mr. Andrews from our Parks and Rec Department talk us through this.
Evening, everyone. Basically, we've done an evaluation of the park system, you know, over the past few years, and realized a lot of our playgrounds have shown a lot of signs of age. Many of the playgrounds are getting into the 15- to 20-year, you know, old, old range. And the oldest playground in the system, you know, working with Public Works, was the Kirby Park Playground. And we're recommending to start replacing these playgrounds, hopefully over the next several years, so we can come up to get in compliance and make these playgrounds safer. So, I'm recommending, you know, starting at Kirby Park with the purchase and install of a new playground this year.
All right, what's the name of the company we're using?
MRC Inc., which is their products Game Time. They're the ones that did the expression swing that we just put into Community Park a few months back.
And what was the total amount of this contract?
This will be $99,921.18, and installation is being donated. So, usually this would cost us probably double of what this cost is coming out to pay on a normal basis, which is a great incentive.
Right. Any questions for Mr. Andrews from board members?
Yes, you're saying that a lot of our parks are coming up to 15 years?
A lot of the playgrounds are, have shown signs of age, it's hard, it's hard to get parts. This playground in particular, we've had to make some modifications. In one instance, a couple of years ago, they let the tube slide on fire, we had to replace it, but we couldn't find a tube slide for that particular unit, so we had to go with the straight slide. And we're starting to find that with some of these older units, just can't get the parts anymore. And it's really, it doesn't make sense to repair them, we need to, we need to start upgrading. And getting compliance, a lot of these were put in before a lot of playground standards changed, like fall zones, distances from the borders, that sort of thing. You know, 15, 20 years ago, things have changed. So, we have to get up the board.
Do you have a game plan when you're going to, like, decycle all?
I want to do one to two a year, hopefully, each year. Yeah, over the next several years, by that time, we'll probably, it's going to be a constant upkeep, I think.
Okay.
And this is something we budgeted for?
Correct.
And this is the one in Vermillion Hills?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yeah, can you just touch on, did you say the labor install was donated?
Yes, through this company, by the, by the company, MRC Inc. Yeah, they're, they're interested in getting, getting some business into Township, so that was an incentive here. And I, we had solicited, we had received three quotes from some other, you know, some of our other companies. This was the best-looking unit by far, and Middletown, our neighbor, Middletown uses them exclusively, and they're, they're great. You know, I researched them with, with my fellow director over there, they're real receptive to, you know, get back to you, working with you and so forth, so I thought, I thought it was a great opportunity to jump on it.
They're probably clearly certified playground installers.
Oh, correct.
So, even though they're donating to labor, they'll still be, the labor will still be warranted.
Correct.
I mean, when I was a kid, we had steel slides about 40-some years ago, right?
Correct.
At about 900 degrees in the summer.
All right, any other questions?
No.
Any public comment needed? No hands? All right. So, is there a motion to approve the Kirby Park Playground in the amount of $99,218 to, is that correct?
99, 921.18.
$99,921.18 to MRC Inc.
I make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
All right. Item number seven, consider bus quotes for the 2020 Falls Township Summer Camp Program, and Mr. Andrews again.
Right back at me. This is our annual, annual summer camp bus quote, quotes that we received. We attempted to solicit three quotes, I heard back from two, two of our providers. In the past, we've used David Thomas Transportation, who I'm recommending this year, we used them last year, they did a fabulous job. The other quote we received was from First Student, who we used, I think, our first year at camp. And we also tried to attempt to contact another company, never heard back, Yellow Bird. So, I'm recommending David's, David Thomas Transportation for $64.96, I believe is the final amount for all our bus trips for the 2020 camp.
All right, next to the pool, too, did it trip you to the pool?
Uh, we're at Walt Disney, we can walk. It saves us, you know, when we're there. It would be an additional cost if we were at, like, Penn Valley or one of the other schools.
And these are the same people we used the past couple of years, you said?
Uh, David Thomas we used in 2019. The company we used the previous three years no longer, you know, provides those services, it was STA out of Bristol.
All right, any questions for Mr. Andrews from board members?
None.
Yeah, did you approach Pensbury to see if they provide the service?
I did not approach Pensbury, no, I did not. I did not. Never used them before. It wasn't.
Live here, spend here, huh?
You can look into it.
Move the table till we get a price from Pensbury.
Have we done it in the past?
We had, not since I've been here, no. Not sure. I can check it out.
Are we going to table this till next week? Next meeting?
Yeah, we have time, we have time.
Well, motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Okay.
Table till next meeting.
Sounds good, all right.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. All right, appointments to various boards and commissions, item number eight. Anybody have any recommendations at this time?
Not at this time.
No, no, no. All right, I have none. Item number nine, the minutes from January 20th, 2020. Any comments, corrections needed? Excellent minutes as always, Mrs. Pullen.
I don't have nothing.
All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bill list. I don't have my bill list in front of me, I'm sorry. Sorry, I looked my bill list in the back. All right, we have a bill list in the amount of $1,933,712. Over 1.5 million of that is bills, I mean, payroll. Not a lot of significant purchases. Is there a motion to approve the bills in the amount of $1,933,712.12?
I so moved.
Second.
All right, Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Clark, can you summarize our executive session?
Yes, Mr. Dent? Prior to the meeting, the board held an executive session to discuss various personnel matters and a matter of potential litigation.
All right, we had the Police Department report already from Chief Wilcox at the beginning of the meeting. Item number 14, manager comment.
We have a few items for the board. The township received the following escrow release requests from Jones Engineering Associates for the following projects, Premium Excavating LLC at 269 Canal Road in an amount of $282,842.45. Second is Britain Industries, One My Lane for $83,167.20. And the last one is a residential project for Kevin Metz, 651 West Trenton Avenue for $805.
All right, any questions? And this is pretty standard, can we do these all together, Mr. Clark, or we're going to do these individually?
You can do them all together.
All right, is there a, this is not township money, although, so by the way, this is developer money. A motion to release the funds for Premium Excavating, Britain Industries, and Kevin Metz.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have to vote on this? Can we, did the, be polled on this?
No, because it's not, you're not, you're not spending money, you're just releasing money.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, anything else, Mr. Tekeeta?
Yes, we received donation requests from the following organizations, the American Legion Post for their Memorial Day Parade, Bucks County St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee, Delaware Va, Delaware Valley Vietnam Veterans, Fairless Hills Athletic Association, Fall Soccer Club, and then also the Levittown Continental Little League. They are requesting work be done in lieu of the standard $6,000 donation. That work would consist of cutting grass and supplying a porta potty.
Should we do these one at a time?
Yes, you should.
All right, we have a $6,000 donation to the American Legion. Is there a motion to approve that?
I so moved.
Second.
All right, second, Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Next, we have a $6,000 donation to the St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee. Is there a motion?
I make the motion.
Second.
All right, Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
We have a $6,000 donation to DV3. Is there a motion?
I make the motion.
Second.
All right, Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
We have a donation of $6,000 to Fairless Hills Athletic League. Again, is there a motion?
I make the motion.
Second.
All right, Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
And Fall Soccer Club, $6,000 donation. We have a motion.
I make the motion.
Second.
All right, Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Now, what are we doing about Levittown Continental? Because we're not giving them actually a monetary amount?
It is authorizing the administration to, to do the work as, as described, I guess it is, the cutting of the lawn and providing-
Yeah, we're going to authorize them to-
And that, that is, that would be at a rate not to exceed the $6,000 donation, correct?
Right, which we were told is less than $6,000, and the ported, portable toilets.
Correct.
All right, do we have that motion?
I make the motion.
All right, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right.
Okay, just a question. Uh, Mr. Tekeeta, just, just, uh, just touching on all the donations we just made. I know last year I brought it to the Parks and Rec Department's attention and our manager's office, but if we could please request the tax exempt status to 501(c)(3)'s from all these organizations. I think it's an easy document for them to provide, and I saw that they did turn in their insurance, but if they could also provide that non-profit status.
I'll do that, yes. At last summer's 1,000 Lights Lantern Festival, the township raised $1,275.50. The board is being asked to consider requests to split these proceeds equally between the United Methodist Church of Fairless Hills and the Restoration Church in Pinewood. Each would receive $637.75 apiece for their respective shared meal, food pantry programs.
Okay. So we're donating this money. This money was raised, they had a lantern festival in the park that raised this money, and we're being asked to give this to the food pantries at these two churches. Any questions for board members?
No questions.
Mr. Tekeeta? All right, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Is that it, Mr. Tekeeta?
Um, we have just a couple of announcements. There were three new businesses that opened during the month of January. First, Call Towing and Recovery at 1444 South Pennsylvania Avenue, the Law Office of Wayne Eli at 225 Lincoln Highway, and Tower Health Urgent Care at 8919 New Falls Road. The Falls Township 2020 Spring Yard Waste Cleanup will be held on Saturday, April 18th. Yard waste must be bagged in 30-gallon biodegradable paper bags, replaced in 30-gallon trash containers without lids, and placed outside your home at 6:00 a.m. And this will be, this will be posted on the township website as well. There's also a 2020 Bulk Disposal Day, and that will take place between the hours of 7:00 and 11:00 a.m. on April, Saturday, April 18th. The drop-off location is the Groves Landfill behind Waste Management's Turkey Hill Office on 1,000 New Ford Mill Road. And again, this will be posted on the township website. The Falls Township 2020 sweeping schedule is posted on the township website and their Facebook page. And lastly, the 2020 Bucks County Household Hazardous Waste Collection Event, it will be on various dates throughout Bucks County, April 4th, May 9, June 27th, August 8th, October 17th. There is a flyer available in the township building, and this will also be posted on the township website and Facebook page.
That's it?
That is it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tekeeta. That brings us to board comment. Mr. Palmer?
None.
Mr. Galloway?
No comment, Nick.
Mr. Brasky?
Uh, just one thing. Lieutenant Whitney, I would, didn't get a chance to ask this earlier, but I was wondering if you could update everybody and whoever's going to watch the meeting as to what steps we're going to take with the five new employees that were hired, and the three officers we sworn in. If you could just touch on those, maybe individually, or you can group the three that we sworn in, and I know what, when we should expect them to hit the road, and, and they'll be on the streets working.
Certainly. So Daniel Metkowski will graduate Temple's Academy on March 13th, and then he'll begin a two-week in processing with us, where we take care of things like his mobile data terminal sign-on, his access to the records management system, our firearms training, our defensive tactics training, things like that. That takes about two weeks. Then he'll begin a 14-week field training officer program, where he'll be assigned, there's three phases to the field training officer program. He'll be assigned to primary officer for six weeks in Phase 1. He'll then go to a different shift with a second officer for Phase 2, where he'll begin to perform more of the tasks on his own. In Phase 3, he'll come back to that primary field training officer, where he'll be basically doing everything and being shadowed by that officer to make sure he's mastered the skills required for a patrol officer for the Falls Township Police Department. So that'll be what happens with Daniel Metkowski. Michael Collins will begin to attend Temple's Police Academy on May 11th. He graduates sometime in November. He'll then begin his two-week in processing, where he'll do the same thing. Once that two-week in processing is completed, he'll start his 14 weeks of field training. Shannon and Goodwin start tomorrow, so they start their two-week in processing, starting at 8:00 tomorrow, where they'll do the things that I outlined earlier, and then they will both begin their 14-week field training. And Michael Maraw, we still have to schedule that for. He's still active duty with his police department in Florida. He's going through the process to resign there and relocate up here. He'll be required to take our MOPAC test to be certified as a police officer in Pennsylvania. As soon as he does that, we'll schedule his first day, and he'll start his two-week in processing, and then his 14 weeks of field training. So they're kind of staggered because of who they are, but they were all excellent candidates. I appreciate you guys allowing us to, to hire each of them. We did have a sixth that we had hoped to hire, but we lost him to the troopers over in Jersey. But Shannon and Goodwin will basically, 16 weeks from now, be on the street working for us.
And the first two officers that we spoke about, Slug on Academy, we've had conversations with you about that this was a good thing for the township. You know, we're kind of looking forward and looking ahead at who's on drop and who's retiring and who's going to be retiring, and, you know, so, you know, it really is good for Falls that by the time we have guys retiring, these guys, even those first two candidates, will be ready to hit the street.
It truly is, and it's extremely important for continuity of operations in patrol to hire ahead of drop. You know, the benefit to management, to the township, for the drop program is that we know five and a half years after an officer enters drop that they are